It's 4:33, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Mayor will not be with us today, and Mr. Plata, I believe, is on his way, so we're just gonna go ahead and get started. The first item is the invocation and the pledge by our city manager.
Join me by baring our heads, please. Heavenly Father, we ask for your guiding hand to lead us through this meeting. We ask that you guide us as we seek and accomplish the goals of today's agenda. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
First item is the recognition of Raymond Gonzalez.
Yes, Ms. Garza. Mr. Raymond Gonzalez actually has been with, not with the City of Mission, but with a partner of the City of Mission. Mr. Raymond Gonzalez has been working for over almost twenty years with First Fleet Services. They're the people that actually do all the maintenance service for not all, for all the police, forwards, the fire forwards, the public works, every city vehicle that we have and a piece of equipment with us here today is also J.C. Avila. Mr. Avila is our Director of Fleet Maintenance, and he'd like to have a quick recognition for Mr. Gonzalez here.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. We just wanna thank Mr. Raymond Gonzalez, of course, on behalf of the mayor, city council, Mr. Martin Garza, and of course, all the supervisors, directors, foremen's that have worked with Mr. Gonzalez here for the last twenty years. Really wanna thank you for all your hard work and dedication, of course, your commitment for the City of Mission. You've always been there for us, getting our equipment, our vehicles out there, getting them fixed and getting them out there to service the rest of the community, so we wanna thank you for that, Raymond. We've seen you like a coworker, not a partner, you know, like you're one of us, part of the Mission family. You've always been there for us, so we wanna thank you for that, Raymond. And, of course, enjoy your retirement, golfing, fishing, of course, spending time with your family. So, thank you, Raymond, for everything for the last twenty years. Just to read this plaque out before I present it, says, "City of Mission congratulates Raymond Gonzalez on his retirement after twenty years of hard work as the General Manager with First Vehicle Services. City of Mission, Mr. Gonzalez has been dedicated partner with the City of Mission and has provided exceptional service and customer satisfaction." Thank you.
Thank you. First Vehicle been here for twenty-three years, and out of those twenty-three, I've been here twenty, so it's been a pleasure working, and I'm honored that, you know, you gave me this plaque. I'll always remember, City of Mission. Actually, I was born here in Mission and raised in California, so the first opportunity came to transfer over here, I did, and we've been here ever since. But we consider ourselves as partners also. I enjoyed doing these special projects, your adopted cities, fixing, you know, getting the vehicles ready to go out. I remember we went and dropped off a fire, an ambulance in a hearse, and I went with Jesse Lermah, and we get there, and the people there, they seen it, and they were so happy to see it, and I says, "Man, this is neat." This is, we're gonna, we're gonna do this, this is something that we're gonna do always, get the vehicles ready to transport over there. So, we donate, you know, we donate our time for that, and we figured this is giving back to the community. And I'd like to thank you once again. Person that's gonna take over my position, his name is Hector Lopez, he's here. He's been here for, he's been with us for a little over three years. I've been training him, so he knows what has to be done, and I'm pretty sure he's gonna do it. So, thank you once again.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Good afternoon, city council. Certainly a tough act to follow, but here we go. As far as the chamber report, on Thursday, June 29th, 2017, we relaunched our business mixers. We had a great turnout at our June 2017 mixer. We teamed up with one of our chamber members, RG Vision Media, and the proceeds from that event actually went towards one of our board members' nonprofits, which is the South Texas Juvenile Diabetes Association, to assist them with their cause, which is assisting children and families who face the challenges managing their diabetes in the Rio Grande Valley. With all the support and all those who attended, we were able to raise over a thousand dollars to help them out. Upcoming events, on Thursday, July 13th, 2017, we have a ribbon cutting for Texas National Bank. Texas National Bank is opening up their long-awaited facility. We definitely wanna thank Texas National Bank for their continued support for the Mission community and for choosing Mission for their newest location. The chamber is very grateful and excited to partake in this celebration, and we invite all of you to come out and join us. Lastly, as I've been mentioning, we have our Mission Community BBQ Throwdown, which is gonna be from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. on July 22nd. You know, we're making this event one that you, your family and friends will be able to join us. We'll have professional chef teams and barbecue teams going head-to-head for the championship, for champion barbecue titles, amazing live music all night long, plenty of fun and games for the children, and we're also gonna invite some of artisan and craft vendors. Registration is still open for barbecue teams, and tickets are on sale now, so hopefully you guys can join us on July 22nd. Any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. The next item is the reports in your packets. Are there any questions, or is there a motion?
I so move, Madam Mayor, pro temp.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to accept the departmental reports as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. The next item is citizens' participation, and that's anyone in the audience that would like to speak in reference to anything that's not on the agenda. Anyone? Did I, on any of the same, no? Okay, then we'll move on to public hearing, and the first item.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. Item 1.18 is a public hearing for rezoning of a 3.8, or 3.082 acre tract of land of the south four acres of Lot 42, Bellwoods CO's subdivision. The property is currently zoned AOI, agriculture open interim, and the request is to rezone the property to R2 duplex, fourplex residential. The applicant is Gilberto Gutierrez, and if the council's inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On June 28th, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The property is located on the east side of Trosper Road, about 1,600 feet north of Mile 2 Road. It's just on the opposite side of Escobarrio's Elementary School. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. What we have here, council, is a property that was annexed by the City of Mission in 2009, and we have some apartments on the property that were built in 1996. So, what the applicant is desiring is to rezone it to the appropriate zone, and there was no opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff and the city manager are also recommending approval. Item 1.18 is now before you.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to the item? Anyone here in favor or in opposition? Go ahead, come.
I'm Gilberto Gutierrez. I'm here to, I guess, speak in favor.
Okay, okay, or if we have any questions for you? Okay. Are there any questions for the applicant? Nope. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the rezoning request for Bellwoods subdivision to R2. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. Item 1.1B.
I'm sorry.
Ordinance number 4527.
Forty-five, twenty-seven, that's correct. Sorry.
Okay. Item 1.1B is a public hearing for a rezoning of a .78, 78 acre tract of land of the south four acres of Lot 42, Bellwood CO's subdivision. The property is zoned AOI, agriculture open interim, and the applicant is desiring a C2 or a neighborhood commercial zoning. The applicant is Gilberto Gutierrez, and if the council's inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On June 28th, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The property is located on the east side of Trosper Road, about 1,600 feet north of West Mile 2 Road. This is directly, I guess, abutting the property that was just approved under item 1.18, and what we have here is the previous owner had a warehouse. I guess he had some type of business, whether it was a roofing business or plumbing business, but the property has a warehouse on site, and this was annexed in 2009, and the warehouse has been there since 1985, and the new owner, Mr. Gutierrez, just wants to give the piece of property the appropriate zoning, and he's requiring a C2 zone. There was no opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff and the city manager are also recommending approval. Item 1.1B is now before you.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this item? Anyone here in favor or in opposition? Are there any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve and also to adoption of ordinance 4528.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the rezoning request to C2 and also to adopt the ordinance number 4528. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. Item 1.1C is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and outside consumption of alcoholic beverages at Mariscos del Siete Mares. The address is 2301 East Griffin Parkway Suite D, which is lots 10 through 12 of Big Orange Subdivision. The property is zoned general commercial, and the applicant is Juan Jose Chapa. And if the council's inclined to approve this conditional use permit request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On June 28th, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located at the northeast corner of Citrus Lane and Griffin Parkway, and previously, this CUP was last seen in February of 2017. However, the applicant is seeking to align his conditional use permit with his TABC license so that they expire at the same time, and that's the reason why we're seeing it in such a short period of time. The hours of operation are Monday through Sunday from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. There's a total of four employees manning during any given shift, and parking meets code, and it's held in common. There are no churches or private schools within the 300 feet of the subject site, thus they're compliant with Section 6-4. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval for two years of the CUP. Staff and the city manager are recommending approval for two years, at which time the applicant will renew their TABC license and conditional use permit. Item 1.1C is now before you.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to the item? Anyone here in favor or in opposition? There being none, is there a question?
I'd like to put a form of the motion to approve ordinance 4529.
Second.
And the conditional use permit.
And the conditional use permit.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit as presented and also adopt the ordinance number 4529. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. And that's the end of our public hearing. The next item is disposition of minutes, and we have one item that was a city council meeting on June the 26th of 2017.
I move for approval, Mayor Pro Tem.
Second.
Here's a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item is the acknowledgement of the receipt of minutes for the ambulance board on March the 10th, 2016. Okay, that's not a typo, it is 2016.
That's correct.
Okay. Zoning Board of Adjustments, January 18, 2017, and April 19, 2017. Mission Civil Service Commission, June the 9th of 2017. Planning and Zoning Commission, June 14th, 2017.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to acknowledge the receipt of the minutes as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item?
Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem, Council. Item 4.1, we are seeking authorization to issue permit to ambulance providers. Currently, there are 12 who have ambulance permits for 2017. The ambulance board recommended approval on June 22nd. Staff and city manager also recommend approval. This item is now before you.
So move, Mayor Pro Tem.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to authorize the permit to ambulance provider applicants, which there are 12 permits being issued. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Item 4.2 is we're also seeking approval for ordinance, the city council of the City of Mission, Texas, amending the Mission Code of Ordinances, Chapter 30, Article 3, Emergency Medical Vehicles, Section 30, 161, 181, and 3182 regarding the parking of ambulances. This is an ordinance that will allow no more than two ambulances to be parked within a residential area or a common parking on commercial plazas. Our ambulance board recommended approval on June 22nd, as well as staff and city manager also recommend approval, and now this item is before you.
Okay. Move for approval?
Second.
I have a question.
Sure.
Mayor Pro Tem, I would like to amend her motion to strike the part on the common parking for commercial plaza. If you look at 4.1, we just allowed 12 different ambulances permits, and then to limit the two ambulances per common parking area, to me, will decrease ambulances in the City of Mission instead of increase, and the objective of the ordinance when it was originally written, which I was part of at the time, was to, the intent was to increase more ambulances in our city for a quicker response, shorter response, and for more businesses to come into the City of Mission. So, if I, I'd like to amend the motion.
Okay.
I don't know if I'll obtain a second or not.
That would require a second. Dr. O'Konya?
I do have a question, though. But is there a particular reason why we would limit the, to two ambulances on a commercial site? I can understand the limitation on a residential area.
The only thing is, what we're trying to do is balance out for those landowners who may have a small commercial plaza, one, two, three, or four. You may have an ambulance company. Sometimes they do move around a little bit in a lot. It just depends, if you have an ambulance company renting a 500 square foot facility with only 10 parking spots, and they're bringing 10 ambulances, that would limit the ability of the other three tenants to find either for their business, so on and so forth. So, we're just kinda trying to balance that out between the landlord and/or the renters and just keep it, like I said, a fair balance between both of them. And we're not trying to limit at all the response of these 12 ambulance providers. The ones that you just approved prior, that brings us up to about 23, and those are the ones that come in, in and out. This would limit only those who have an actual business within the city limits of Mission, not those coming in and picking up from point A to point B, or point A or B going back to point A. So, that doesn't limit that at all. That just kinda balances everybody else from having a fair chance, the landlord and/or the large ambulance companies. And we do would like the large ambulance companies to have a facility, you know, of course, to house their 10 ambulances plus their parking. As you all know, each ambulance is two a piece, so you got 10 ambulances, that's 20 cars, 10 ambulances, that's 30, you know, so that could cause a little bit of, so we're just trying to control that. That's all we're doing. We're not trying to limit any ambulances to come in and do any business or deter them from coming into the city. We want them to be here, and we do work with all the ambulance companies here, and these ambulance companies here who have a permit, these are the first ambulance companies that we call during a crisis, an emergency situation. We do have a call-down list that we do operate over at the operations center.
If it's a, if it's a common parking area for commercial plaza, normally in those kinda situations, the, they, all of them get together, that's why it's a common parking area, you know, because they get together and they, and they all pitch in, so I'm sure they're in agreement with the, with the ambulance company being there, you know.
Right, and you are correct, Dr. O'Konya. It's just like I said, it's a way to keep an enforcement of someone stepping over their boundaries on parking so many ambulances in such a small little space. When there is a big, actual common parking spot, then, of course, there's more, but when there's less, then how do we defend that, and how do we keep everybody fair?
But that's, to me, that's more of a landlord-tenant issue, not a city issue. Usually, when you, when you sign a lease, you'll, you know, there's specifications as far as parking and that type of.
And I'm sure we can work something, if, maybe the language might not be correctly for the commercial spot, but we just kinda wanna make sure that they don't become parking lots.
Before the residential area, you know, two ambulances for residential, I understand because residential areas are designed to, for people to live, you know, but on the commercial part, to regulate that, if I was to open an ambulance company here in Mission, you know, and I would have to start from a small park area, which means I might have to get a common area, not a humongous area for me to put all my fleet, because I'm gonna start with one, two, three, or four ambulances, but if I can only park two in a particular area, and it's commercial, it's owned, it's owned for the purpose of commercial, why the limitation, I guess?
And that's why we attached it, not so much to a single ordinance, we just amended the ordinance that already exists, 'cause they already have, they must comply with naming the insurance, Mission Hospital, City of Mission, so on. So, it's just an amendment to the existing ordinance, not a standalone ordinance, so that's all we're trying to do, is just to keep a balance, and not much of that.
I'd like to.
Mr. Garza, I have a question.
Sure.
And how many ambulance companies do we have in Mission?
Two.
Has there been any complaints?
In, there has been complaints off of Glasscock and 495, and like I said, I do my weekly rounds to make sure the ambulances are, have the permit, and every two years our ambulance, and odd number of years. So, this one is going to end at the end of December 31st, 2017. So, October, first of October, 90 days before it ends, I start the process, send out letters to these providers who currently have permits, and says, "Hey, we're gonna start the process again, turn in the application." When I do my rounds, I go to some of these, and these ambulances are parked either behind or complex, and I'll get stopped, and say, "That ambulance is always parked here, we can never park here, we don't have a permit," you know, and they take up all the space, they're washing their trucks here, and, you know, I said, "Okay." And that would be the business owner next to, whether they've complained to the landlord itself, or, so I just kinda wanted to make sure that that doesn't happen, but this will not discourage them from coming in, dropping off, unloading at the hospital, dialysis centers, ERs, none of that stuff. But I do get complaints when I do my weekly rounds, "Sir, they're here again," and I kinda tell them nicely, "Hey, guys, you know, just be courteous to your neighbors," and I definitely, ma'am, do not wanna get into landlord-client, you know, business. So, I kinda says, "Hey, let's do it together," 'cause they see me as an enforcement toward the permit process, but the enforcement through my office is for permit purposes only, application, make sure our insurance is in the name, again, make sure the vehicles are up to par, 'cause we do have a medical checklist that they must go by, that they must adhere to according to the ordinance. So, that's the reason why we ended up putting it as an amendment to the permit process, not as a standalone ordinance.
I stand with my amendment, and we'll be looking for a second from one of my peers.
If I may, Dr. O'Konya, real quick, just to bring light as to how this came about. First of all, it came in through complaints, concerns that were addressed, and the concern mostly were that parking spaces in plazas are meant for parking of the customers and so forth. And so, what started happening is the company started using the common parking spaces for parking of their fleet, and some of those fleets became larger than expected. When they started with two ambulances, by the time we knew it, we had seven, eight ambulances, ten ambulances in a parking plaza, that those parking spaces were supposed to be meant for customers and to come in and out and so forth. So, that's when it became an issue. And so, this was brought over to the advisory board, the ambulance board, to discuss, and actually, there was a conversation back and forth since the last meeting of January of 2016. I think we've been talking about this, and so, they're just really concerned on the amount of vehicles that are being parked in those plazas, that those parking spaces are being used for fleet, for their own personal fleet, and so, and so, we said, "We can address it through the amendment of this ordinance, through the enforcement of what his office does," instead of dealing something with our planning department, which that way will keep us away from any type of contracts that both the landlord and the actual tenant might have.
Is the ambulance office in the right zone?
No, it's commercial, it's commercial, but they're keeping a fleet of vehicles in a parking space that's supposed to be used for customer service of that plaza, and so that's why that concern was brought to the board and it was discussed.
Not their own facility, right? It's just on our.
No, what we're talking about is when you have a plaza with, let's say, multi-family, I mean, a multi-tenants that you have, let's say, five suites, and in that five suites you have an ambulance company, and so, they have scattered, in that parking lot, they have scattered seven, eight ambulances in that parking lot that belongs to the whole, to the whole plaza. Now, if the building was stood by itself, then it's your building and it's your parking lot, and you can use it to park as many fleet as you want, but when it's multi-family, or I'm sorry, multi-tenant, as far as the commercial plaza, that's where it became an issue, and so it was brought over to the advisory board to discuss and make a recommendation, but we can continue looking at it if you wish, or if you all wanna give us some direction.
I'll go ahead, I'll go ahead and pull my amendment for the sake of making it shorter the discussion, but I would like for you to visit.
Yes, sir.
That, maybe they're in the wrong ordinance, wrong zoning area. Yeah, I don't know if this commercial, this common is a C3 or C2, or, you know, maybe with, so we can allow those ambulance companies, so they can know, they can know ahead of time when they get their permit. If I'm gonna have 15 fleets, 15 ambulances in my fleet, I can put them where, I can put them in the area where I'm opening, you know? And, and again, it goes back to what I mentioned about the restriction of two ambulances only.
Yes, sir.
What it's gonna do, he mentioned about eight, you know, what is the, what is the company gonna do with those six? Where are they gonna put it? Did we zone them wrong?
Right, and so, this one going to affect immediately, the way administratively, the way we would work this is whenever they come back, which would be.
First of January, 2018.
First of January, we sit down with them and say, "Okay, you're located at this location, and we have a new ordinance," and so, we would give them between now and January the 1st to go ahead and make arrangements on the new amendment that is being proposed. So, it wouldn't be taken care of immediately, sir. I mean, we would work with those, it's, how many companies are we talking about, James?
About 22 or 23.
I'm talking about that, that are affected. Because they're in a commercial plaza.
Two, no more than three, unless we get anything.
23 ambulance composite to pull out of Mission and go somewhere.
No, 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 no. The other, the other ones that are being approved, sir, are just, they have a permit to come in and out of Mission and do business pickups and drop-offs. These are, what we're talking about. What we're talking about is businesses or companies that have their business establish any commercial plaza inside the city limits, right? And so we're just trying to minimize the fleet. They're using a common parking lot to provide their, you know, their fleet service there. And so that's been the concern. And but what we can do, we can come back and take a look at it a little closer.
I'm just... Because this is not a zoning issue.
No.
That they're in the wrong zone is not the issue.
It is if we put the restriction on them.
No, it's still not a zoning issue. It would just be a permit issue.
It would be a permit issue.
They would only be permitted to have two ambulances on site.
So our ordinance and our application are online under the City of Mission website, under the FAR department. And we do take more than 90 days. I will make sure that we'll get together with our planning department, and get together with our legal, and make sure we send out the right letter with the right verbiage, the right language, make sure that we address those issues that we have, not a zoning, and those type of commercial plazas. And there is, in your handouts, we do have the new ordinance with the new bolded recommendations there. We'll make sure we do that and take care of those before we take any other further action. And like I said, it won't be till the 1st of January, 2018. So they won't take effect till 2018 and 2019, because our permits and odd number of years.
And you know, and I understand all of that, but I'm still not comfortable with limiting two ambulances per site on a... In a commercial parking... Even if it is a common commercial parking lot, because that is, to me, that's a tenant/landowner or landlord issue. And they should be allowed to park the, you know, X number of cars, or trucks, or ambulances for this, in this case. You also have the, you know, situations like the daycares, the adult daycares, they're also in commercial plazas, and sometimes they have five and six vans. And those are used in the morning and the afternoon, and during the day, they're in the parking lot. So we can't get into those types... I don't believe in that the city should get into those types of regulations.
And like I said, the only reason why it was brought up was because it was complaint-driven from the public.
I understand. But we should really speak to the...
Owner of the plaza.
The owner of the plaza and to take care of those issues.
I have a couple of questions more.
Yes.
How many ambulances permit do we issue out per year?
Roughly...
How many companies are here in Mission?
Just a little bit over 20, 22, 23.
23 total.
Total.
How many of them have two or less ambulances?
Maybe about half.
Have one or two?
One or two. They do have the one or twos.
So 13 will be... They're going to be affected by this ordinance?
Only if they have a base of operations within the city limits of Mission, only. That does not apply anywhere else.
No, no. I'm talking about if they... Obviously, it has to be inside a common place, inside our city.
Right.
You know, so about 13 will be the ones that are going to be affected by it.
If they were all within the city limits of Mission, yes.
They're going to have to cut down and find another place for the other ambulances. If they have 20-something ambulances, that means that they're only parking two and finding somewhere else to put the other 22.
Yes. But we can always take it back, just give us some guidance. We can always try to either vote on the numbers.
I would like to put back my amendment and look for a second.
Send my second motion.
And further study it.
Yes, I would like... I mean, I would hate to go against your committee, because I'm sure that you all have professionals that take their time to go and speak about this issue. But I also go with my colleagues. I would hate for that business to have chosen Mission to be their... Where they have their business, and then for us to tell them no when it's like a permit non-zoning issue. I'd like to go and maybe talk to the landlord and see how we can take care of that.
But I do want to make it clear that I do want to approve that no more two ambulances to be parked within the residential area. I just want to strike out common parking for Commercial Plaza.
Okay.
And re-study that, and go come back with that, just that, but not necessarily not pass the ordinance.
Jessica, are you okay with that amendment to your motion?
Yes, I'll second.
Okay. And is that okay with your second?
Second.
Okay. So are there any other questions? All right. I'm sorry.
Mayor Protem, just to be clear, there was a motion by Mr. Ruben Plata and a second by Ms. Jessica Ochoa. However, she has rescinded her second. And in the process, Dr. Ocanya has made a motion to strike the Commercial Plaza. Is that what the second was for?
It's the amendment to the original motion.
Okay. So the second is for the amendment, for Dr. Ocanya's?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Which means you have to vote on the amendment first, and then to vote on the ordinance second.
I don't think that was second. Did you second the amendment?
No. We just... You just need one motion. You already made the amendment to the motion, so we're just going to vote on the motion. All right. So the motion on the floor...
This is okay.
The motion on the floor is to accept or pass ordinance number 4530, amending the ambulance spaces to two in the residential area, and strike the common parking for Commercial Plaza, to be later discussed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, all opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Oh, you've got another item.
I have another item.
Okay.
Taking everybody's time. Mayor Protem and counsel, item 4.3, we're seeking authorization to execute the first one-year renewal option for mobile intensive care ambulance services with Medicare Emergency Medical Services, also known as Medicare 911, our EMS provider. Our contract would expire July 19th, 2017, at midnight. This is the first one-year renewal option that we have in our contract. Also, ambulance board recommended approval on June 22nd as well. Staff and city manager also recommend approval for this one-year renewal option. This item is now before you.
Okay. Are there any questions?
More to approve.
I do have a question.
Okay, there's a question.
I have a question. The retainer cost is what?
There is no retainer cost, sir.
So it's zero. The retainer cost is zero?
That is correct, sir. It is zero.
Okay.
Yes.
That's my question.
I made the motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to authorize the execution of the renewal with mobile intensive care ambulance service with Medicare Emergency Medical Services, Inc. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and counsel. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gortos.
Ms. Aida.
Good afternoon. Item 4.4 is the approval of resolution number...
1514.
1514, declaring the adoption of the municipality of Puerto Morelos from the Estado of Quintana Rola, Mexico, as one of Mission's sister cities. A letter has been sent from the mayor of this particular community, Puerto Morelos, Mayor Laura Lynn Fernandez-Pina. They did send a representative during our international brunch in January, and we've been corresponding back and forth. They have requested that the city of Mission sign a sister city agreement, and so this is seeking authorization for Mayor Salinas or designate a sign with them in August in Puerto Morelos. Staff and city manager are recommending this approval. This item is now before you.
Okay. Are there any questions or motions?
Where is Puerto Morelos?
In Quintana... The state of Quintana Rola, which is adjacent to Cancun.
Okay. Is there any other questions or a motion?
I move to approve.
Chair, second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the resolution number 1514. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item. Chief?
Item 4.5 is authorization to retire police K-9 Caesar from active duty, and authorization to have K-9 Oswald Alexandra Lial adopt Caesar, subject to the signing of a whole harmless agreement. Mayor Protem, council members, K-9 Caesar has served the citizens of Mission as a narcotics detection dog and tracking dog. Due to multiple health conditions, veterinarian David Hefflin is recommending retirement. We are requesting to retire Caesar and have Oswald Alexandra Lial adopt Caesar after signing a whole harmless agreement. Staff and the city manager recommend approval.
So move, Mayor Protem.
There's an authorization to retire police K-9 Caesar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously, and congratulations on your retirement, Caesar. Yes.
I'd just like to thank the chief for having the confidence to have me as a K-9 officer.
It changed my life.
It changed his life. And I just, like I said, like to thank the chief and the city council, the city council for having this program. I mean, if it wasn't for you guys pushing for it and keeping the funding going and all that stuff, well, I wouldn't be here. So I just want to thank the chief and the city council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we should go down there.
Yeah.
Let's go down there.
He's just got to hold him.
Mayor Protem, he's going to be waiting for his first check in a month from TML.
Just to come up a little forward, right there, center, if you can help the council.
Somebody call him, yeah? Come on, go over here. Caesar. 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 Where my tiger? Hey, 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 chill out. Chill out. Hey, good boy. Good boy. Good boy. That's a good boy. Oh, that's a good boy. That's a good boy. You definitely have a good home. It's okay. It's okay, baby. It's okay. It's okay. Good boy, Caesar.
Trophy, nobody's ever petted him before.
Oh, really? Good boy. Good boy.
That's it, I'm going to send to you.
Right?
No, he's going to track you.
Probably.
Anna, you got a little bit scared there.
Next time, tell them to bring in a face card.
All righty.
Beautiful dog, beautiful dog.
He is a beautiful dog. Yes. Okay. Next item. We got to get back to business. We got to get back to business, right? Yeah. Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem and council. Item 4.6 is for approval of final one-year action plan 2017-18, and authorize city manager to execute sub-recipient interdepartmental agreements, receiving fiscal year '17 CDBG allocations, except LRGVDC, Area Agency and Aging, and Amigos del Valle. The CDBG allocation is for $872,197 for fiscal year '17-18. The following agencies and departments were approved for funding by the Citizens Advisor Committee. Silver Ribbon, CAC Recommendation, $2,000. Staff's Recommendation, $4,000. Easter Seals Society is $4,000. Children's Advocacy Center, $7,000. Salvation Army, $2,000. CASA, $2,000, which is a new agency. Heroes Haven, $2,000, which is also a new agency. Housing Assistance Program, $596, $957, and Administration and Project Delivery for $221,024. City manager recommends staff's recommendation. This item is now before you.
Okay. Are there any questions?
So move, Mayor Protem.
Second. Okay. There's a motion and a second to approve the final one-year action plan as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item?
Yes. Item 4.7 is approval of final one-year action plan 2017 and '18, and authorize city manager to execute sub-recipient agreements, receiving fiscal year '17 CDBG allocations to LRGVDC, Area Agency and Aging, and Amigos del Valle. Mayor Protem, the following agencies were approved for funding by the Citizens Advisor Committee. LRGVDC, Area Agency and Aging, CAC Recommendation, $5,000. Staff's Recommendation, $7,000. Amigos del Valle is $26,000. City manager recommends staff's recommendation. The item is now before you.
Okay. I have to abstain.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the item as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I have to abstain on this item. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, next item. Ms. Myra.
Good afternoon. Item 4.8 is the approval of Region 1 Education Service Center Memorandum of Understanding. This MOU will allow the city to continue to be a host site for Region 1 to conduct their adult education classes for free to the public. We provide the facilities, the internet access, and help in the recruitment, and they provide the instructional personnel and the materials and supplies. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Okay.
So move, Mayor Protem.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the memo of understanding with Region 1. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Next item.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem and city council. On behalf of Mr. Roberto Salinas, Public Works Director, I'll be presenting item 4.9, Authorization to Award Bid for Boring Machine for the Public Works Department. We received one bid response, and to award Prairie Dog Boring Equipment, meeting all specifications, with a cost of $17,959. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Okay. Are there any questions or a motion?
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to award the bid for a boring machine to Prairie Dog Boring Equipment, Inc. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem and council. Item 4.10 is the authorization to execute the second one-year renewal option with Deer Oaks EAP Services. This would be our second renewal option with the EAP. There will be a 4 cent increase per employee per month, as per the original proposal, and staff and city manager are recommending approval.
Okay. Are there any questions?
I do have a question.
Okay.
I just need to know the total number of our employees that have accessed EAP.
About... It'll be all of our full-time employees, which is about 580 employees.
Have accessed it?
Mm-hmm.
Item 4.11 is the authorization to execute first one-year renewal option with Lincoln Financial Group. This will be our first renewal option. There will be no increase in rates as per the original proposal, and staff and city manager are recommending approval.
I so moved, Mayor Protem.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the item as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item?
Item 4.11 is the authorization to execute first one-year renewal option with Lincoln Financial Group. This will be our first renewal option. There will be no increase in rates as per the original proposal, and staff and city manager are recommending approval.
I so moved, Mayor Protem.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the item as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item?
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor Protem and City Council. Item 412 is the approval of resolution 1515 by the city of Mission suspending the July 20th effective date for the statement of intent for the Texas Gas Service Company as to increase rates within the areas of the service territory. And so this resolution allows the race to be suspended and review the proposed changes and establish reasonable rates. The city of Mission will join the other Royal Grand Valley municipalities in authorizing the law firm of Lloyd Goslink to negotiate and make recommendations based on this increase, approximately about 18.35% is what they're proposing. And so staff and city manager recommend approval of this resolution.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve resolution 1515 to, by the city of Mission suspending the July 20th effective date of the statement of intent of the Texas Gas Company to increase rates up to 18.35%. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next item? Chief?
Mayor Protem and Council, I'm here before you, seeking authorization for item 413, authorizing to purchase fire equipment from Metro Fire Apparates Specialist, Inc. via Texas Byboard Contract 524-17 for the Mission Fire Department. These items are to replace fire equipment and supplies that are no longer serviceable or repairable. The cost of the purchase is $16,594. The staff and city manager recommend approval.
Okay. Any questions? Motion?
I moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve item 4.13. All in favor, say aye.